All this November 5th, 2015, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Can I have a roll call of the members, please?
Dirk Boden.
Present.
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Emory Dorsey.
Present.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Thank you. Could we all rest for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Next up on our agenda is approving the Order of the Agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Alright, let's vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Great. We need to approve the minutes from November 5th, 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2015.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Alright, next on our agenda is the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Don't see anyone in the audience. For those of you on TV, if you have something planning related you'd like to come and discuss, we would love to hear from you. Please do come down. Next up is our public hearing. We've got five resolutions, all from Renewal Wheat Ridge on the agenda for today. I'll read off the numbers. I think what we'll go ahead and do is hear the presentation for all of them together.
Mr. Chair, it's actually under "Other Items."
Oh, "Other Items," pardon me. There is nothing under the public hearing. Any other business? No, okay. "Other Items," thank you. I think what we'll go ahead and do is listen to the presentation for Renewal Wheat Ridge on all five items, just to save time, and then address each one of the resolutions separately in question, and obviously for the motions for the resolutions. So, Steve Art for Renewal Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. It's nice to be back in front of you today. For the record, Steve Art, the Economic Development and Urban Renewal Manager for the City of Wheat Ridge. Tonight, we come before you, not just because we want it to burn a lot of paper in your packet, but actually, we have some very important business that we need to do. Understanding, it may be a little difficult to understand exactly what we are going to talk about this evening, so I'm going to explain to you what the need is for all these substantial modifications in the urban renewal plans. Before you, on your screens, is a map of all of our urban renewal areas in the city. Currently, we have five active urban renewal areas. They're all formed at different times within the city. What we're asking tonight is that we do a substantial modification to begin the tax increment financing, or as it's known in the city, the TIF clock throughout all the urban renewal areas in the city. And I'm going to explain to you what the need is for that. The purpose of the modifications is to react to some legislation that was coming down in the state. It has nothing to do with the ballot question 300 that was on the ballot in November. This just happens to coordinate that they both happened at the same time. Earlier in 2015, the state legislature passed Bill HB 151348. It was signed by the governor in May, and it goes into effect January 1st of 2016. I'll explain the purpose of the bill, but I want you to know, one of the reasons we're doing this is because there's a lot of uncertainty in this bill. Even the governor and the sponsors of the bill acknowledge there's a lot of uncertainty, ambiguity within the bill, language in the bill that's written rather, that we think is rather poorly, and we want to react to it through our legal council's recommendations, that we enact a substantial modification. The problems with the bill, the governor has appointed a working group that is trying to address some of those issues, but every urban renewal authority in the state that has not already started the initiation of the TIF clocks is actively pursuing what we are asking for tonight. What HB 1348 does, it will add three new members to the urban renewal board. That will be one member from the county, one member from the school district, and then all the other tax entities, which in this instance would be our sanitation district, water district, fire district, and there's one other district that I can't remember, RTD, would then be able to select one member between them that would sit on the board of the urban renewal authority. The Act also requires after January 1st, that if we haven't started our TIF clocks, that every time we do what's called an activity, and most people refer to that as a project, but when we talk on urban renewal, each urban renewal area is called a project, okay? Anytime we do something, like we did the Sprout Shopping Center, the Kipling Ridge Shopping Center, that's an activity. So I'm going to refer to the word "activity," it's undertaking or activities. So when I talk to activities, it's about an individual activity within that urban renewal plan area. So 1348 says anytime after January 1st, if you haven't started your urban renewal clocks, every time you do an activity, you have to go to all of those tax entities, and you have to negotiate a deal with them, a tax-sharing revenue deal with each one of them. The problem with this is, A, it can add on anywhere from six months to 12 months, even longer, if you cannot negotiate with any tax entity on doing a project such as the Kipling Ridge project in the city. Another thing that the bill is so ambiguous about, it also says that, let's say in January of 2016, a project comes through my door, and I'm able to go out and I negotiate a deal with all of the tax entities. We build that project. Five years later, another project in that same plan area comes to me, completes a property and says, "I'm ready to do a TIF deal on my project." Fine, I go out and I enter into negotiations with all those other tax entities. Not only can I enter into negotiations with those tax entities on this current project, but they also have the right to go back to that first project that we did and renegotiate all those deals. Not a real good thing if we're looking for lending institutions. So lending institutions across the state right now have almost stopped funding urban renewal projects, because if you're a bank and you're going to land on a project, then they come to you and say, "Today, we have this deal that says, here's how you're going to be repaid." But five years down the line, that can all be renegotiated, and you're going to have less revenue and less money to repay that debt. Would you, as a bank, loan to it? Probably not. So by starting the urban renewal clocks, we will avoid that. We will not have to go to negotiations with them. And it'll pretty much be status quo the way we operate today. And just to let you know, here in Jefferson County, in any city in Jefferson County, through all the urban renewal projects, the county, the school district, the special tax agencies have never objected to one of the projects here in any of our areas. So we tend to have a real good relationship with all those entities. So what we're asking for tonight is that we start those tax increment financing clocks on all of our plans. The reason we didn't start them when we formed the plans is communities, when they form urban renewal plans, they have two ways they can go. They can start the 25-year TIF clock, and the reason you would start it is because you have active undertakings, projects that you're going to do, that you know when you form this project plan area, that we have active activities that we're ready to go with, so we're going to start the clock. In Wheat Ridge, we did not start the clock because when we formed the plans, there were no activities speculated, so we just waited. And that's why we now initiate them one at a time. We came Perrin's Row, Kipling Ridge, Wheat Ridge Cyclopes, Wheat Ridge Corners, West End 38th, all separate ones, we come to them, because we didn't have this effect of having to negotiate a deal. Just to let you know, we have no specific activity or initiation of TIF revenues that's being requested tonight. So it's not as if we're going to start the clock, and then we're going to start receiving in revenues from all of these different projects. We aren't. We're just starting the clock. We would rather have 100% for a less period of time than have to go out and negotiate, and perhaps only have 10%, but for a period of 25 years. It's going to put us on a level playing field with all other urban renewal authorities throughout the state. So what we're going to be asking tonight, and we'll go through each one individually, is for the Planning Commission to adopt resolutions to allow us to start those TIF clocks. This will then, your recommendation will go forward to the City Council on December 14th, and at that time, we will ask the City Council to adopt the resolution approving the substantial modifications to all those urban renewal plans. We'll start the clock. We'll beat the January 1st, 2016 deadline, and we'll be able to operate and hopefully bring to our citizens new development, remediation of blight throughout the city, and have the urban renewal continue on its great mission. So again, here's a map of all of our urban renewals areas. With the Commission's willingness, I'd like to go through each one, one at a time, and at the end, we can have a motion to adopt each resolution separately. Is that ...
Please, please do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buckman. The very first one is the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. Really runs from Wadsworth to Sheridan along 38th Avenue, about a block to either side, north and south of that. It was adopted in October of 2001. It's had four previous amendments to it. Two of the most recent ones were the Reed Recyclopes and the Perrin's Row project. It really looks at, as all of our plans do, and as we go along through each one of these plans, you're going to notice that they're all very similar. And urban renewal plans throughout the state are extremely similar. We're all looking for public-private investment into projects. Within this one, we wanted to create a main street. That was really the goal, to create the 38th Avenue Redevelopment Plan. And it really looks at some infrastructure improvements in there. And infrastructures could be anything under the ground. It could also be looks to buildings and new facades on buildings. Part of what you are looking at tonight, your main mission tonight, is to look at, do the substantial modifications that we come before you this evening, do they adhere to envisioned Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan? And that's really what you're looking at tonight. You're not looking at any specific buildings. We're not looking at elevations. We're not looking at activities or undertakings. We're really looking, by doing the substantial modification, by starting the clock, does it meet the city's comprehensive plan? And once again, as we go through these five plan areas tonight, you're going to see that pretty much they're all about the same. Within this one, we're committed to quality development, redevelopment. We want to develop a town center and identify key development areas. We want to promote a vibrant neighborhood, array of housing options, and I think we're starting to do that along 38th Avenue. We realize there's a need to revitalize the downtown area along 38th. We're going to target development, infill, improve inefficiencies in the project area. Once again, create a main street, provide development tools such as TIF. We want to improve the corridor image, improve transportation infrastructure. And then it also adheres to other plans within the city, and that one really is the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan in there. So what we're going to ask you tonight is to adopt Resolution 03, 2015, which would create the substantial modification. The next plan that we have before you is the I-70 Kipling Corridor Plan that was adopted in August of 2009. It's our largest urban renewal plan area. Really stretches from the west side of town, the Applewood Shopping Center, to the Clear Creek Crossing Project along north of I-70 to Kipling, and then down Kipling. And it really terminates just about at the Gold Shopping Center on 26th. It's been amended twice. The last one was for the Kipling Ridge Shopping Center, 38th and Kipling. Once again, it also looks for public and private investment. It supports the gold line that will be coming through, starting November of next year, and that was one of the main reasons that it was formed. And that project most likely will need some tax increment financing to help spur that on. It supports Clear Creek Crossing, the site that was going to be Cabela's, 85 acres owned by the city, that needs about $30 million of infrastructure probably to get that thing going, to get a stick into the ground. And also, again, infrastructure improvements. Here are some of the ways that it, I just picked out the plan, and I think if you look at each plan that you have, there are probably 10 pages of ways that it adhered to the comprehensive plan. I only pulled out the key areas in here. Our consultant from Ricker Cunningham is here tonight, Bill Cunningham, and he will be able to answer any questions you have about how it really does adhere to the plan. But once again, quality development, redevelopment, a town center, a variety of housing options, assemblages of property, targeted infill development, improve inefficiencies, new facades, again, as they all do, provide development tools such as TIF, improve the corridor image, and improve transportation and infrastructure. And with that, we're going to ask you to approve Resolution 04, 2015. Please stop me if at any time you have any questions. Our next area is the Wadsworth Corridor Urban Renewal Plan, formed in October of 2001, and that really goes from Wadsworth, just a little north of 44th Avenue, down to approximately 35th Avenue, and runs along the corridor there. It's been amended once, and that was for the Wheat Ridge Corner Project, public and private partnerships in there. We're seeing that more and more throughout the state and the country, of such high development costs there, that there's public-private partnerships almost in any significant project that you see started throughout the state. It creates a town center. It kind of flows in with the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. Creates that vision of what we want that town center to look like. And again, it will fund infrastructure improvements. Again, a list of quality, desired elements that we want of it. Really, the main one is the fourth one down, the Wadsworth is a primary commercial corridor. It is our busiest street in the community. So it looks at using certain TIF elements to help advance on what we're trying to do on the area there. Looks at retaining jobs, making jobs. All the plans have these common elements in them, and again, improve transportation and infrastructure. With that, we're going to ask you to adopt Resolution 05, 2015 tonight. Our next plan is the 44th and Ward Road Urban Renewal Plan, also adopted in 2001. It's never been amended. Really, the largest area of that is the truck stop area there along 44th area. I wasn't around when it was formed, but I would imagine at some point, they envisioned with what they were doing with the off-ramps of Ward Road there, and those improvements on there, that that would be a large urban renewal there. We haven't seen much activity there, but I'm certainly sure, as the city advances on, we'll start to see more of that. It also supports the gold line. It is just below the gold line, but it'll be a large feeder into that area there. Public and private investment enhances infrastructure and transportation. One of the interesting things about this is the fourth bullet point down is, it really goes with the other plans, the Fruitdale Plan, which really looks at that corridor being more of an agricultural look to it. There were a lot of farms along there at one time. Is it the Ba House that's located along 44th Avenue there, which we're looking at bringing more agriculture in? The Fruitdale School, as you'll learn, hopefully, very short in the future, that's going to turn into some sort of agricultural charcuterie use along that corridor. So we're starting to look at that as some sort of destination area for agricultural along that street there. Plus, the existing Heineys Market is along there, the Edwards Meat Market along there, so we're creating that option there. Again, if you look down that list, it's pretty much the identical items that are in all of our other areas. What we're looking there is the adoption of Resolution 06, 2015. Our final area is a brand-new urban renewal plan area. It's being called the West End 38th. It's really to help meet a project that has come along called the West End 38th Project, which will bring in some ground floor retail along 38th, approximately 150 units of market-rate apartment up above it and behind it, structured parking in there, and the rebuilt Vector Bank Building that will be built up closer to the street. Originally, this property was part of what is currently our other urban renewal plan area that's not part of this. I'll explain that to you. The Town Center Urban Renewal Plan. The Town Center Urban Renewal Plan really encompasses what we refer to as the Big Lot Center and the Safeway Center, all those properties there, down to this property. Approximately 1982, the urban renewal plan for Town Center was utilized as a TIF project to build that mini park that's behind the Good Times Burgers, and the access road between the Big Lot Center and the Safeway Center. Previously, there was no access between the two areas. So urban renewal tipped that entire project to help build that park and put in that road. So you can't really tip a project twice. It's already used, it's 25 years. So what we're going to do is, we're going to terminate the use of the Town Center Urban Renewal Plan, and we're going to then break off this section of it, create this new plan which allows to tip just this property here, and create a brand-new plan out of it. Again, if you look through this plan, it's very, very similar to our other four active plans that we're going to keep going right now. Within this plan, we will start the TIF clock on there. It's part of the Town Center Plan. It corresponds with the Wadsworth Plan and the 38th Avenue Plan, and it really talks about the other things. And this one narrows in because it's just a small, focused land, talks about the assemblage, redevelopment of outdated properties. If you look right now, very old structures on there, condemned structures on there, no infrastructure, no future use for that land there. So that's what this plan will help do. And with that, we're going to ask you to adopt Resolution 07, 2015. That's really the presentation for this evening that I have before you. As I said, all of our urban renewal plans are relatively the same. That's why we thought we'd give you all separate reports, but present this as one comprehensive report tonight, and ask you then to adopt each resolution individually. With that, we do have staff here this evening. If you have any questions about any of the areas that we're looking at, we also have our consultant, Bill Cunningham, from Ricker Cunningham, this evening. With that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions, Commissioners.
Great. Thanks for the presentation, Steve. Why don't we start with Dirk? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Amanda?
I do not have any questions.
Okay. Emory?
I just have a question. What happens, since we're going to start the TIF clock on all of these projects, the clock hasn't been started yet. That's a 25-year window. Some of these projects could be way out, like the West End 44th Avenue situation and all. That could be 20 years from now, before there's any development out there. So your window on that one would be five years to do a TIF. Can that be readjusted, or is that set in stone?
Well, that current project would be set in stone. So we sat down, and we did some analysis with our legal team and some financial, and we came to the conclusion, and it's basic, we would rather have 100% of five or 10 years, rather than having to negotiate, which may end up with, you only get 10% of the thing, but you get 25 years. You end up with less money in the long run. But what we could eventually do if a clock runs out, is we can reevaluate that project area, and it's what we're doing, like with the West End project, create a brand-new project area down the line. What we're hoping this does is spur activity in the urban renewal area, now the clock starts. And we're finding that most TIFs, usually now, they're not running 25 years. They're running 10, 15 years. So we still think we have time.
That's good. Thank you.
Donna? Steve?
I just have two questions. One is, is the proposed TIF meant to be property tax and sales tax, or just one of those two?
In all of our plans, we have utilized sales and property tax. But again, we're only starting the TIF clock for both of them. We're not collecting any TIF.
And then, for the properties, I assume the existing amendments where we've already established, like Perrin's Row, for example, that won't be affected by any action by a City Council from this? Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct, yeah. Those projects were started, or those activities were started before that January 1st timeframe, so they are not affected by HB 1348.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Scott?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So back to the, I guess a couple of things I want to go over is, can you explain to me why there's a separate, right now, we already have a 38th Avenue Corridor redevelopment area, and then we're creating, inside that, we're creating the West End 38th Urban Renewal Plan. I guess, what happened with Perrin's Row was, did Perrin's Row have a separate urban renewal plan for just that area?
Perrin's Row was located within the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. So we did that. That plan is still existing. This new West End is just outside of the 38th Avenue. So we had two avenues we could have traveled down. Do we want to add it to the 38th Avenue Plan area, or do we want to create its own separate? After analysis and talking with the legal, they said it's a lot less cumbersome to form a brand-new plan area just for that project.
Okay. And then, the other things I have, so on that West End 38th Urban Renewal Plan, the TIF hasn't started for that project yet?
Correct.
Okay.
We did approve an agreement with them for that project.
Right.
Obviously, ballot, now ballot question 300 comes into, the retroactivity portion of it does come into question. So we're waiting to see about that.
Okay. Some of the things I had questions, and I don't think it's going to change anything, but this might be, as far as some of the blight factors, I don't know if this would be towards you or the gentleman.
Probably you, Bill. Okay. He'll run up here when I look blank.
I think that's the only questions that I had for you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cunningham, if you can just come up and state your name and address for our record, and maybe answer Scott's questions.
I'm Bill Cunningham with Ricker Cunningham. Our business address is 8200 South Quebec Street in Littleton.
All right. Scott, do you want to address any more questions to Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, so the questions I have are on the, like, items E and F, where it talks about deterioration of site or other improvements. And it said one of them is unpaved parking surface, that that's a deterioration. And I guess I would question that as, to me, it's only a deterioration if there is an existing asphalt or concrete surface. If it never had one, then there was nothing to deteriorate. It was just, I guess I would say now it's, would be a non-conforming driveway, not necessarily a deterioration. And then it says, and then along those lines, it says, "Lack of landscaping," and that's a pretty broad brush. I could, I wouldn't have to walk very far where I would say a lack of landscaping, a lot of areas in Wheat Ridge. And it says, "Unkept landscaping," kind of the same thing. So I'm just not sure that I agree with that being a blight. I think that, that statement of the unpaid parking surface, unkept landscaping, I think that would apply to a lot of areas, even outside of Wheat Ridge. I guess I just, and then it talks about, the next one, unusual topography or inadequate public improvements. And it talks about due to a lack of appropriate accommodations for bicycles. To this, to my knowledge, I know, I think the Safeway Store doesn't have bicycle racks, and there's a lot of areas, you know, would I consider that as blighted? No. Do they need to provide it? Procode, they probably do, but, and then it also talks about sidewalks being less than six feet. There's a lot of areas in Wheat Ridge, even in my neighborhood, where the sidewalks are, they're not even three feet. And so would I consider that a blight? No. So those are just my points. I don't think it's going to have any effect on that project, but I just, I just kind of question those as factors in the blight.
Well, and I think the best way to address that kind of a question, because I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of factors within the statute that, you know, admittedly, there is a lot of, you know, ambiguity in some of the statute factors. What we usually look at when we're out, you know, doing our blight analysis, we tend to look at the environment around whatever parcel we're looking at, or whatever collection of parcels we're looking at. If it's an infill parcel within a pretty developed urban environment, then we're going to hold it, that parcel, that area, to a higher standard when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to, you know, sidewalks, you know, paved parking areas. So I think there is a lot, that there's probably a lot of subjectivity in the way that we look at blight conditions. But again, you know, going back to the statute, and that's really what we have to answer to legally, is they identify, you know, the kinds of things that qualify as, you know, side improvements that are either deteriorating, or improvements that would cause higher-than-average costs to improve. And again, that's why, you know, for context, we are always looking at comparing those areas to, you know, a pretty highly-developed urban environment.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have any questions for Mr. Cunningham? Donna? Emory? Amanda? Dirk? All right. I just had a couple of follow-up questions regarding some of those same qualifying factors. You mentioned in a few areas, for example, under subsection, what is it, H, "Existence of Conditions That Endanger Life or Property by Fire or Other Causes." You mentioned "Presence of Environmentally Hazardous Contaminants." That phrase is used throughout a number of these. What specific environmentally hazardous contaminants did you find on that site?
And again, you know, in terms of context, which is what we have to rely on when we're looking at these parcels, the first source that we go to is the EPA. to is the EPA, and, and we look at their database, um, do they have, you know, any, um, facilities or sites within their database that are either within our area, the, the survey area that we're looking at, or adjacent to? Um, and in this particular instance, we, we found a couple of sites and facilities within the EPA database. One is the, uh, the Bradley Petroleum Site, which is adjacent to this area, not within the boundaries of our survey area, but adjacent to. And, uh, again, going back to the statute, they really want, um, that, they really want that qualifying factor to be based on, you know, is there the potential for environmental contamination, uh, contamination of groundwater, um, other urban re, urban renewal areas that we've worked in across the state, um, there have been instances where adjacent parties or parcels, or even parcels, you know, a quarter-mile away, that have, you know, maybe underground storage tanks, contamination of some sort leaking into the groundwater within our survey area. So again, it's, it's more than anything to, um, just raise, you know, raise that issue and say, "these, these sites are close by, we're not saying that they're hazardous contamination sites, but they are on the EPA's radar, they are being monitored." Um, so that's, that's essentially how we evaluate that factor.
Okay. Um, the other specifics, I was wondering you might, if you might have on hand, uh, you mentioned under subsection D, "in increasing, uh, under unsanitary or unsafe conditions, increasing trend of traffic accidents and criminal incidents." Uh, what sort of data do you have for that, uh, that area?
We rely on, um, you know, the, the police department, fire department data for that. Um, they give us, um, you know, pretty much all the criminal and traffic incidents within an area. And again, it's not on that particular site, but we're looking at incidents along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, um, where there have been, you know, hi, high-traffic accident counts. Um, we then compared those, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor area, to the city at large, and that's where, you know, there was a higher-than-average number of traffic incidents within that Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor. And because it's close to, um, the, this site, or this area is close to the intersection of Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, there were a particularly high amount of incidents at that intersection. So again, um, we're not saying that this particular site has an unusual number of traffic accidents, but there have been incidents in close proximity.
Okay. All right. Uh, I, I get it. All right. Thank you very much. Um, if there are no other questions for Mr. Cunningham, we'll let you get back to your seat. Thanks very much.
I'll stay close.
Okay, great. Uh, Steve, I, because I didn't quite have a chance to ask, uh, I had a couple of follow-up questions, um, after the other commissioners were done with you. Are there any other modifications besides, uh, you know, just starting the TIF clock, the TIF implementation, uh, to any of these, to any of these plans?
That's all we're asking. All we're asking this evening is to initiate the twenty-five-year clock, no other changes to the plan. Um, Bill, northern, you know, we, we found some verbiage that was incorrect, no other changes to the, any of those plans besides starting the clock.
There was, um...
Can you, can you come back up here, Mr. Cunningham, so we get you a...
You know, it's been, it's been ten, fifteen years since we looked at those plans, and we had them relook at the plans, and they found some minor inconsistencies.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it was really, um, it didn't relate to, I don't believe, starting, starting the TIF clock over. Um, it was more, um, more than anything, just cleaning up language, I think, you know, mo, mostly editorial comments. I can't remember anything that was, um, you know, significant enough to change the tenor of the original plan.
We didn't change the side area, you know, still the same boundaries. Uh, one of the big things we did is when we went through our GIS system, I'll probably get off the air, we went through our GIS system, of which Ricker Cunningham needed thorough maps. We found out that our GIS system in a couple of areas was a block off here, a parcel off here, so we really went through and cleaned up that. So now we, our website and our GIS system will accurately, hopefully accurately reflect the current urban renewal areas. And that's mighty language, but nothing that's changing the plans.
Okay. Yeah, the reason, the main reason I asked is when I was looking over some of the maps, uh, for example, on the West Forty-Fourth Avenue and Ward Road Rede, Ward Road Redevelopment Plan, there was a, a parcel that appears on, um, what looks like the newer map, the newer GIS data, way over on Xenon Street. Uh, not sure if it's, I can't recall off the top of my head if it's residentially zoned or not, I think it might've previously been. Uh, it's, it's kind of this one little dogleg, uh, bit way over on the west side of the redevelopment area that kind of goes, it actually borders, fronts Xenon Street.
I can speak to that if...
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, so that particular parcel, um, we actually have a, a land use application that we've received. But that dogleg, um, is not a separate parcel, it's actually connected to the parcel that fronts, um, Young Field.
I see.
So it's, it's one continuous parcel that has a kind of unique shape in that particular location.
Okay. I just, I noticed there was a difference between what I saw on that map and what we saw on some of the earlier, the, the blight survey that was done and submitted, uh, shortly before, probably that was approved or something. So I just wanted to make sure that the only modifications we were talking about tonight had to do with, uh, the, the TIF clock that you're talking about.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any more questions for these gentlemen? Okay. Uh, thanks very much. Discussion? Motion? I'm open to all of it. What do you guys wanna talk about?
Mr. Chairman, unless there's any discussion, I will make a motion on the first one.
Okay.
Um, I do move to adopt Resolution Zero Three Dash Two, Twenty Fifteen, finding the amended Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, uh, call for a vote then, on that resolution.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
All right. Um, regarding our second resolution, the I Seventy Kipling Corridors Plan, discussion? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen, finding the amended I Seventy Kipling Corridors Urban Re, Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote on that resolution, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Our third resolution, uh, regarding Wadsworth Boulevard Corridor Redevelopment Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I do move to adopt Resolution Zero Five Dash Twenty Fifteen, finding the amended Wadsworth Boulevard Corridor Redevelopment Plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, our fourth resolution is the West Forty-Fourth Avenue Ward Road Redevelopment Plan.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution Zero Six Dash Two Zero One Five, finding the amended West Forty-Fourth Avenue Ward Road Redevelopment Plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for a vote on that.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. And our final resolution, uh, on the agenda, for the new West End Thirty-Eighth Urban Renewal Plan.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Seven Dash Twenty Fifteen, finding the West End Thirty-Eighth Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote on this final resolution.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. Okay. Thanks again to everyone, uh, for all their helping, uh, helping us understand this issue, and, uh, is there any other business, uh, any of the other commissioners have, before we adjourn? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Let's vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
A brief announcement. Um, we are planning on holding a Planning Commission meeting on December third, in two weeks. We have a land use application for your consideration that evening. Um, as well, just for your, um, FYI, staff is bringing forth two study session items to City Council this coming Monday that were on, um, the zoning ordinance amendment kind of proposed list for Twenty Fifteen. So we're gonna be seeking some initial feedback from City Council regarding the CMRS regulations, which is essentially the cell tower regulations. There's been some FCC regulation requirements that we need to bring our code up to date with, as well as just some general updates to development standards. So at some point, after we get some direction from the City Council, we, uh, may be bringing that forth to you sometime in the next few months. The other item for study session is an accessory dwelling unit, um, possibility for an ordinance to permit accessory dwelling units in the city. Right now, they're currently prohibited. Um, Council has asked, um, for some information for their consideration to determine if they're interested in pursuing that idea. So that one, um, again, is Monday night, so, um, we'll keep you posted as to their direction. Yeah?
If we want to support that, do we need to...
You're welcome to attend, or you're welcome to provide something in writing. Again, right now, um, I don't know that they, you know, you're obviously always welcome to speak at public comment, you know?
I just do know that was...
You know, you can come at either, you know, if you're gonna come, I would, I, my understanding is it's probably best to come as a citizen, as a resident, not necessarily as a member of the Planning Commission, representing the commission. Uh, but you're always welcome to come and, you know, share your voice as an individual in that. Um, if the Council's interested, um, staff at this time, um, presumes that we're probably gonna hold a couple of public meetings, at least on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, so we, we do anticipate some public feedback, um, to be solicited regarding that. Um, there's a number of development standards and considerations and impacts and things that we, um, at least staff, City Council may feel otherwise, but staff would like to, um, seek the feedback of the community before we draft a lot of those regulations. So keep an eye out, but we'll keep you posted on that. Um, again, you're always welcome to come and share your opinion, so.
Great. Okay, well, thanks for the update. All right, we'll see you guys next time.